Good evening, everyone. This is Mayor Bob. I am in City Hall, actually in American Legion Hall in the conference room, sitting across from our city clerk, Bessie Jo Wagner, who will be helping me tonight. We will start with our usual roll call. I want to welcome all of our citizens that have joined us tonight and welcome everyone from council and from city staff. So, Bessie Jo, would you please help me with the roll call?
Yeah. Councilmember Callen.
Here.
Mayor Giles.
Here.
Councilmember Holmes.
Here.
Councilmember Machazek.
Here.
Councilmember Nielsen.
Yes.
Thank you, council. So, the record shows we are all in attendance. I have, I'm gonna take a couple of minutes to read a prepared statement. I'll call it a mayoral address to talk a little bit about expectations that we as council hold of ourselves. And this is in relation to yesterday's events at the Capitol. This morning, as I was briefed by Annette, I asked her for some help as I wanted to prepare some thoughts. And Erin Reeves graciously put together some great information for me. So, let me run through this. I think we've already heard quite a bit of really strong direction condemning the violence that took place yesterday at our US Capitol in Washington DC. Many of our local Idaho leaders took time and put together a lot of good thoughts. They spoke out yesterday capturing many of my feelings in their use of their words, and I think you'll be able to relate to that. For example, Congressman Folcher called the events unacceptable, and Congressman Simpson noted, "We can disagree in a better way." Our chief executive in Idaho, Governor Brad Little, encouraged Idahoans to stand up for law enforcement, respect rules of law, recognizing that we uphold the tenets of the First Amendment, but it must remain a peaceful expression. Our Idaho leaders were united in their request to end the violence and put the perspective in the right places, like Senator Crepo, who showed his support for the Capitol Police, for the National Guard, and all law enforcement that were on the scene. These states' statements captured the guidance that we truly need here in our community, in our city council, after those appalling events, and it's what I believe is one of the most significant ideals. Leadership matters, and at the local level, our ability to lead as neighbors is truly a gift. As McCall city councilmen and councilwomen, and symbols of our citizens' wants and needs, we have a duty to set an example of peaceful debate. We can guide this community and speak for the people without violence. So, let's continue to keep all of those affected yesterday at the Capitol in our prayers. And as we begin tonight's local city council meeting, I hope we can all reflect on the important role each and every one of us play in keeping McCall safe, healthy, peaceful, and prosperous. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next item is to approve the agenda and consent agenda. Let me start with the published agenda. Would council please make a motion and second?
It's Mike. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mike and Melanie. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the published agenda for the January 7th special meeting of the city council.
That was Kelly, by the way.
Kami.
Kami, I apologize. Thank you for correcting me. Make sure my hearings work a little better. So, that motion was made and seconded, and we usually, on the general agenda, do a voice vote. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the agenda is approved. We'll now move on to approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mike, motion to approve the consent agenda?
Melanie, second.
Thank you, Mike and Melanie. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Machazek?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Callen?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. We will move on to our public comment section. In our agenda, it's listed as general public comment. Comments were due by 3:00 PM today in writing. We received 21 comments. I'll highlight those because we did not budget time to read all of them. All 21 comments were related to the resolution supporting the Central District Health Public Health Advisory. So, it's related to that topic, which is a later topic, a later agenda bill. We will not read each comment at this time. All comments were submitted to the council ahead of tonight's meeting, and Bessie Jo provided me the following summary. Seven comments were in favor of the resolution as stated, the resolution as printed in our agenda and in our packet. Fourteen comments were against the advisory. And of those comments that were against the advisory, eight comments cited concerns with Section 7(c), which is related to the restrictions of the non-school-related activities. Three comments citing concerns with the 7a section, which is the business implementing delivery and curbside service. And then, five comments were completely against the resolution, some of them echoing the concerns of others, and the remainder felt that it was just too much. All of these comments are part of the official record. They will be attached to the minutes of the meeting in their entirety, and council has, all members of city council have received all 21 comments. We will now move on to the public hearing section of tonight's agenda. It's Agenda Bill 21-005, request to approve Resolution 21-02, adopting the Valley County Multijurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is an action item. And let me turn my notes over. So, there are three parts to the recommended action. Part one, we will be briefed and we'll receive information, a presentation from Juan Bonilla, the Valley County Emergency Manager. We will then open and conduct a public hearing. And then, the last step of the recommended action is to approve the Resolution 21-02. So, Juan, I believe you have the opening remarks on this.
Okay. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Juan Bonilla, Emergency Manager for Valley County. I will tell you that the All Hazards Mitigation Plan was a whole county effort with all of the stakeholder agencies participating in the steering committee, and it was a two-and-a-half year. By the time we got this approved, it's been, through FEMA, it's been three years working on this specific plan. What the plan does, it's a multi-jurisdictional plan that allows for mitigation efforts for the prevention and projects of all hazards mitigation throughout the entire county, where it be fire, flooding, road issues, those types of things, even stuff with schools, county measures, individual city measures that they may have that fall within the premise of the federal granting allowed in the All Hazards Mitigation as written. The plan is a five-year plan. I received the plan and was asked to update it because it hadn't been updated since 2010, and we were supposed to be a five-year plan, so the state was really worried that we weren't going to be able to ask for federal dollars any longer. So, that's why it took so much longer to build the plan that we have today. I feel confident that we'll be able to utilize any funding mechanisms that may arise as these five years go through and make monies available for certain projects for all areas and all agencies throughout the county as we move forward. With the All Hazard Mitigation Plan, we're looking at continuing our steering committee meetings, and rather than waiting till the end of the five years to update, we'll be updating on a yearly, biannual basis, the five years, so that it's not so much work. In that way, we always have a good working document that we'll be using in five-year increments as we move forward. Another thing is, we used U of I this last go-around, and the state now, through Idaho Office of Emergency Management, is working on having its own riders and its own teams to help the counties from this moment forward to continue those updates and continue to revise those plans as we go, which should make it more streamlined and more universal to use for all of us, so it's not such a hard task that takes so long. I appreciate the city's efforts and all of the other agencies' efforts within the city of McCall who helped make the plan possible with all their continued data and conversations beyond the committee as well, with the riders and with the Idaho Officer of Emergency Management and my office. So, with that, that's pretty much what the plan does. It just allows for money for mitigation efforts in all hazards mitigation types, and I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Juan. Before we go to questions, let me back up and formally make sure that we have opened the public hearing. So, the purpose of this public hearing is to consider approval of Resolution 21-02, adopting the Valley County Multijurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. The public hearing is hereby opened. Juan has presented an overview of the plan and some history and background to us. So, I will look to city council to see if they have any questions initially that they would like to ask Juan, or of any city staff that participated in this effort.
Mayor Giles, if it's helpful, the, I believe it starts on page 93 of your packet, are the McCall-specific items, and I would highlight that the most substantial mitigation measure that we submitted in this document to FEMA, and it sounds like it's been approved as appropriate, is our investment in our water system as outlined in our Water Master Plan, a need for future water storage and fire flow pressure issues in some of our neighborhoods where we are going to be doing upgrades. And so, that's probably the most substantial thing that we added in was that effort to upgrade our water system for fire pressure. And so, now that it's in there, that would be something we'll be eligible to apply for grant funds to help us implement that from the Water Master Plan.
Thank you, Annette. Let me move on to written correspondence related this hearing. Were there any written comments received, Bessie Jo?
No, there were no written comments.
But the records show there were no written comments received on this public hearing. Is there anyone online with this in the team's environment or on teleconference that would like three minutes per person to provide public comment related to this particular public hearing?
Nobody signed up.
No one signed up, and hearing none. We'll go to the next step.
Do you want to see if the council wanted to ask any questions?
Council, do you have any questions that you would like to ask either Annette or Juan Bonilla?
This is Kami. I just want to thank the group that put that together, Juan and his team and everybody involved. I think they did a great job.
Thank you, Kami.
Bob, this is Melanie. I felt that this was extremely well organized and very easy to read, and I really appreciate all the effort, but no questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Melanie. Anyone else? All right. We will move on to the next step. I will close the public hearing. No more public testimony will be allowed, and it is time for city council to discuss the evidence obtained during the hearing and proceed to making a decision to approve or not approve the proposed resolution. Let me quickly poll the council to see where you stand on this resolution, and I will start with Melanie.
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Mike?
Looks like a very well put-together planning document, so all good.
Thank you. Kami?
Yep, I'm good with it.
Colby?
Yeah, looks good to me.
Thank you, and I'm good with it. So, I would need a motion. Let's see. Motion to approve Resolution 21-02, adopting the Valley County Multijurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
This is Kami. I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 21-02, adopting the Valley County Multijurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
This is Melanie. I second.
Thank you, Kami. Thank you, Melanie. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Resolution 21-02, adopting the Valley County Multijurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Callen?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Machazek?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carries. So, Juan, thank you very much for providing your leadership, and congratulations. It'll be great to have this plan in place and be able to utilize the funding and the other tools that are part of the plan.
Thank you, Mayor and city council.
We are now on to our business agenda. First item is Agenda Bill 21-002, requesting adoption of Resolution 2104 in support of Central District Health, November 17th, 2020, Public Health Advisory to slow the transmission of COVID-19. This is an action item. And looking at my script, my notes, it sounds like we will start with a presentation, a short briefing or presentation by Annette and possibly Dr. Greg Irvin and Amber Green from St. Luke's. We also have Gina Pennell and Russ Duke online, attending our meeting from Central District Health, and they will be able to help us with questions should they arise. So, Annette, would you kick this off?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and council. As you will recall, back in the middle of December, your last meeting before the end of the calendar year, we gave you a COVID update, and at that time, we had just learned about the efforts of Central District Health to adopt a new public health order that formalized the advisory they had in place since November 17th. The board did not adopt that order. However, council felt that it was important to show support for Central District Health's advice and guidance to our community on safe practices that we should be following during the COVID pandemic. So, you asked us to come back to you tonight with the resolution you could adopt in support of the measures that Central District Health already has in place in terms of advice for people to follow. So, the resolution that's before you is allowed to be issued under your ordinance 995, the Emergency Powers Ordinance. It's considered an advisory order, which is advice only. It's not an order enforceable with any kind of penalty. The language that we placed in the resolution for your consideration tonight is taken from Central District Health's current Public Health Advisory that's in effect now. I asked Dr. Irvin and Amber Green from St. Luke's and Gina and Russ from Central District Health if they could join us tonight and help update you on current conditions in our area and help you navigate the discussion on the elements in the proposed resolution. As you know, you got a lot of feedback related to sports, non-school-related sports, and I also want to remind you that our ordinance specifically says that we can't issue regulations on the school district, and that's why that wording for that particular element says "non-school-related activities." So, you did receive from me in response to some of the concerns about school, or excuse me, non-school-related sports activities, some other options for language that you might consider if you would like to keep something like that in the resolution. Again, the council, it's up to you what you would like to have in your health advisory based on the advice from the health professionals. And then, if whatever happens tonight, the current Central District Health Public Advisory is still in effect. We feel as staff that it's important to support our health community and help reinforce or reiterate messaging of these behaviors that could help slow the COVID spread, but ultimately, it's up to the council how you would like to proceed with that topic. So, with that, I think, Mayor, if you would like, we can have Dr. Irvin kick us off, or unless he and Amber have decided amongst themselves what they would like to do, but I think we could start with St. Luke's and then have Gina fill in or Russ fill in the basis for their recommendations.
That sounds great. If you could help me facilitate that, Annette, you'll remember the order of our guest speakers. Thank you.
So, this is Greg Irvin.
So this is Greg Irvin. Pleased that you invited me to participate this evening. My, I'll try to make my comments as brief as possible and let Amber fill in the blanks as we get going here. This is going to be a bad news, good news story. The bad news first. We are seeing a spike since November 1st in Valley County of COVID cases. And we'll go into the data on that in a bit. Valley County has been, in terms of seven-day moving average, much more involved with COVID than we had been before November 1st and have been hovering around. Today, we were seven-day moving average of 47.7. We've been as high as a seven-day moving average of 69 cases. And that's far above what we've been before. In terms of, we're seeing an increased number of patients hospitalized from Valley County and from Adams County, which we also serve at St. Luke's McCall. The system as a whole, all St. Luke's sites have currently are an elevated hospital capacity status after having been slightly lower in the past week. We've now become elevated again. There are 110 adults admitted with COVID on an inpatient basis and three pediatric patients in the St. Luke's system. And a number of those are in intensive care around the system. And we've certainly been transferring patients from St. Luke's McCall, from Valley County and Adams County to the Treasure Valley for care, to the bigger hospitals there. We are admitting some patients currently to St. Luke's McCall with COVID that meet specific criteria, where it's felt that they can be cared for here. But the majority of cases that require admission are being sent for higher, higher level care to the Treasure Valley. Total tests to date at St. Luke's McCall have been 4,564 cases. We've had 456 positive results with 40 tests as of today pending. In November, we did 712 COVID PCR studies. We had 94 positives in November with a 13% positivity rate. In the month of December, we did 865 tests with 177 cases positive and a 21% positivity rate. So we saw steadily increasing cases through November into December. The, in the last seven days between New Year's Eve and January 6th, yesterday, we've done 206 cases and we've already got 47 positives. In the last 14 days between Christmas Eve and yesterday, we did 374 cases with 86 positives. So we're seeing steady increases in cases at St. Luke's McCall and are seeing sick patients on a regular basis that are being transferred to, in, in many cases at least, transferred to the Treasure Valley Hospitals for a higher level of care. We've gone from having had one death in Valley County to the most recent data, which showed that there have been four, four deaths in Valley County within the last six weeks, other than that initial one death that we saw. That's the bad news. The good news is that the vaccine has arrived in Valley County and at St. Luke's and Cascade Medical Center. And based on CDC criteria, we are working on vaccinating all St. Luke's employees who choose to receive the vaccine and to have our entire staff, those that are, are receiving the vaccine. We expect to have them vaccinated with their first dose of the Moderna vaccine by the end of next week. The planning for the future, and things are moving quickly. And we've been working on logistics and communication is that we are hoping in coordination with the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare Health Districts to begin scheduling COVID-19 vaccines for high-risk, non-St. Luke's healthcare workers. That's, as those groups have been prioritized by the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare's COVID-19 Vaccine Advisory Committee. And I think that Gina will have some additional information about the release of those priority lists as they become available through their website. We expect to begin having appointments available for high-risk individuals that meet those criteria beginning next week. Our employees will start receiving their second dose of the vaccine next week, but we will be concomitantly beginning based on the tiers that are defined by Idaho Health and Welfare vaccinating high-risk individuals. We will be having appointments only when the actual vaccine is available as it's released by the state and released by the FDA and is shipped to the state of Idaho. We're not at this point able to give a specific timeline when groups will be open for scheduling. We're trying to balance community demand with vaccine supply and maintain alignment with public health districts. We continue to be reliant on the health district, the state and federal planning for many pieces of our vaccine program, including the amount of vaccine we receive weekly. But we are moving quickly to increase available appointments and administer doses as promptly as we possibly can. We desperately want to get the vaccine into willing participants' arms as quickly as possible. We anticipate having information posted on our public website, a website which is stlukeonline.org. There's going to be a vaccine information page by Monday afternoon. To be prepared, we encourage the community to set up a MyChart account if you're a St. Luke's patient. And we'll be using this tool, the MyChart tool, to set up, schedule appointments. If you don't have a, if citizens don't have a MyChart account, they can set one up by contacting St. Luke's and will be assisted in the, the setting up of MyChart account because that's how we'll be doing scheduling. We're also working to set up a process to be notified when individual, individual priority groups will be able to schedule their vaccine appointments through that website. We also plan on reaching out directly to those entities that qualify to reach the vaccine in the first priority group as soon as that's determined. So that's the good news is that we have vaccine in Valley County. We've done a number of vaccinations thus far on care providers, nurses and staff members at the hospital who are at high risk for the contraction of, of the virus. And we are very optimistic about our ability to serve the community to get as many Valley County residents and McCall residents vaccinated as quickly as possible and as soon as the vaccine becomes available. I'll take questions from the City Council.
Council, questions for Dr. Irvin?
Dr. Irvin, this is Melanie. I don't have any questions for you this evening, but I do want to thank you for being here and really appreciate the updates you give us.
We're happy to do that. That's the least that we could do for the community is to keep everybody updated and informed about this pandemic. And yeah, we're, we're in difficult circumstances now. We're looking forward to helping the community get out of these circumstances.
Annette, did Amber have any comments she would like to share with us?
I am not sure if she's on the line. Oh, yep, she is on the line. So I think she's unmuted now.
Thank you, Mayor Giles, and the opportunity to attend the City Council meeting. Dr. Irvin did an amazing job of really recapping where we're at. I really just want to highlight some of the most important parts of what he described, and that is that we began vaccinating our employees on December 23rd. I think that is a day that will be ingrained in my mind for, forever. A very important day for us. It was very emotional for our staff and really, I think, signified a beginning to the end, which is fantastic. Since then, we have immunized between 150 and 175 employees. We are moving through our tiers fairly quickly and have recently had the opportunity to coordinate with the Idaho Department of Health in rolling out vaccines to the first phases of the public distribution. So we will be beginning that next week. Communications will go out hopefully Monday afternoon for appointments that will be available on Wednesday. I do want to share with City Council what sometimes limits us in the amount of vaccinations that we can give from a week-to-week basis is really human resources as well as space resources. We're still caring for all of the patients that make regular appointments within our clinic and we're having to provide additional space as well as staff to provide those resources, as well as keeping in mind that these immunization clinics require two separate immunizations. One is the initial shot. The second is the booster, which is received four weeks after. And we have to make sure that we leave capacity to give that second booster in four weeks' time, which will essentially double the amount of resources that we need to continue, continue giving the vaccine. So we're excited about the opportunity to provide this vaccine to our community. So far, we've had an, an amazing response for our staff and are looking forward to the same response from our community. So I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Amber. Counsel, any, any quick questions for Amber?
It's Mike. I don't, excuse me, I don't have any questions, but I definitely wanted to reiterate how much we appreciate you guys keeping us informed and in turn helping keep everybody in our community informed of what's going on. So thank you for all your hard work.
One thing I want to reiterate, and it goes without saying, but I'm going to say it anyway because I've been a broken record since March, is that though the vaccine is here and though it gives us hope of controlling this pandemic, the same rules that have applied all along and that we've been harping about apply in, in many ways, they apply for us in McCall and Valley County even more than they did because there is so much virus in the community. And we have to, we've learned, as we've learned about this virus, that more than 50% of viral spread is spread by people who don't know they have the virus, who are totally asymptomatic. And that's really the big reason why this virus has been so difficult to control is that people that are spreading it have no idea that they're spreading it. So universal precautions for masking, distancing, avoiding large indoor groups and hand hygiene continue to apply. And I know we, we've, you know, we've, people's eyes blaze over when we talk about that. But it absolutely has to continue until we get vaccine-induced herd immunity in the community and then we can get back to life as normal. And that's going to be a while. It's going to take some time. So it's very, very, very important that people continue to observe those precautions that we've been talking about so much and for so long. This is not the time to relax. If anything, it's the time to double down on being as careful as we can be about reducing the viral spread. And realize that anybody that we encounter on a day-to-day basis may be shedding virus and may be creating infections. So please do whatever can be done to, to augment and maintain that. If we can get through into the, through the winter and spring and into early summer, we really do have some hope that we're going to finally be done with this thing. And we all look forward to that. None of us likes what this has done to us, but the virus is making the rules. We are not.
Thank you, Dr. Irvin. Was going to ask and invite you and Amber Green to stick around with us. We're going to move to conversation with Gina Pennell and Russ Duke from Central District Health. And you may know that we received public comment on our resolution. One sticking point that we're going to need, council would like to explore and get some help from Central District Health and other health experts is the, I'll, I'll use one example, the extracurricular activities such as ice skating and hockey at our local hockey rink. It's an indoor activity. So we got a lot of comments on that and we are looking for some, we'll be looking to Central District Health for some advice on how to, how to be able to allow those kinds of activities to some degree in a safe manner. And we may need to ask you some questions, Dr. Irvin, as well as Amber Green. So please stick around for the next 10 minutes or so. All right, with that setup, let's hear from Gina and Russ from Central District Health.
Yeah, hi. Good evening, Mayor. Gina, would you like me to start?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Russ.
Okay.
Welcome, Russ. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, for sure. And thank you so much for the invite and thanks for always involving Gina in your, your meetings and really appreciate the partnership. And I just want to start definitely by thanking you and the City Council for, again, you know, I look at the, the partnership we've had with different cities around our health district, our four county health district, and you guys are definitely at the top of the list as far as being responsible and being responsive to this public health. I call it a crisis, you know, something we've obviously never faced, at least in the last 100 years. So thank, thank you. I also want to thank Amber and, and Dr. Irvin and I appreciate Dr. Irvin's last comments there because even, even though we have the vaccine and it, and it's great, it's exciting news, we, we cannot change the, the behaviors for, for all the reasons we know. I, I know there's a lot of interest. Okay, I get the vaccine. I don't have to wear a mask. And, you know, and, and none, none of that really is to change at this point. We, we still have a long, a long ways to go. I was just going to provide a quick update on the vaccine. There were certainly some lofty goals put out there by the, the federal government and the current administration about the, the volume that our country would receive and be able to administer by the end of the calendar year. And unfortunately, that didn't come to be. And there's, there's new lofty goals being set by the new administration coming in here soon that I'm not overly confident that that's going to happen, you know, whatever, whatever those, those numbers are in the first 100 days. We're, we're getting in Idaho about 19,500 doses. So that's statewide. Not, not for our health district. We'll get about 30% of that because we make up 30% of the population. So it's, it's really good news that, that, that St. Luke's McCall is doing the work they're doing. They have plans in place to, to reach out to, you know, the business community, healthcare community, individual, individual patients to get the vaccine administered as soon as we get it. But I just got off a call this afternoon with the state. They, they have the best optics on what's happening at the federal level and they're not expecting this supply to change in the next couple of weeks. So it's, it's 19,500 plus. So it's 19,500 plus second doses. So that's, that's a good thing. It's second doses don't have to come out of these weekly allocations. I was going to, I guess, you know, Dr. Irvin explained the situation extremely well. Valley County is near, near your all-time high as far as the number of cases and case rates and however you want to measure it. So, so that's definitely, definitely of concern and definitely should be a concern for the community. As far as the, the public health advisory, as was noted, that's, that's all it is. It's, it's a strong recommendation to our community. We want people to understand what we would like them to do. And how, how we designed that back in November was just looking at the, not only where we were seeing cases and clusters and outbreaks, but just looking at the risk factors, what puts people at risk for contracting COVID. And, and essentially, that's, that was the basis for the design of, of the advisory. The cases certainly continued to, to rise at a fairly rapid rate after that, district-wide, not just Valley County, well, statewide and countrywide for that matter. The board asked us to, to transition that into district-wide order. And then, well, a lot happened over a couple-week period of time. We had one meeting disrupted to the point where it was suspended till a future date. And when they finally voted, it was a three, three to three vote, which caused the transition to make that advisory in order to fail. Clearly, the risk, the risk to our communities didn't change. And I, you know, Gina and I live here in Boise and here in Ada County. And the good thing is, most everyone, you know, they're working really hard and trying to do the right thing. And that's what's the right thing. I think, you know, we put that in the advisory for sure as one mechanism to, to advise our community. So I'll, I'll, I guess I'll, I'll say one last comment. You know, the Valley County mask order is still in place. That's for public places, and that's all defined in the order. The advisory is in place for all four of our, four of our counties. And, and I do think it's good to have community leaders like yourselves and health systems to, to do what you can to keep pushing this message. You know, I think everybody's a bit worn down from it and ready to move on, but it's not time. And I feel, feel strongly, if we can get through the next couple of months and get a lot of our, our population and our communities vaccinated, we'll be in a much better position come late spring and early summer. I will stop there, and I'll, I'll maybe take questions, or we can pass it on to Gina for any comments.
Why don't we move along to Gina? And Gina, if you could help, help the council and help me with answering that question about our public comments about their skating rink and hockey and ice skating competitions and practice, do you see a path forward that you, an option that you could help us with that would be responsive to that? And at the same time, provide, provide a similar level of safety from COVID?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, and city council members, of course, and thank you for the opportunity. I'm very grateful for your guys' partnership, as Russ mentioned, throughout the last months, what feels like years, but months, through this process. You know, I want to speak high-level a little bit about the advisory. And when we look at our role in public health is to promote and protect our communities. So these advisories are advice. They're really best practices for those individuals who want to implement them, who know that there's some additional factors that are risky that they can do to protect their community. And that, that's the intent when I think about an advisory itself. We know, and even Dr. Irvin mentioned, being the broken record, we're the same over here. And sometimes individuals and businesses are looking for that additional contribution that they can make. And this here outlines some of those things. I will speak specifically to hockey. And I've, you know, spoke with Annette about the potential for this to be an issue because we honestly saw these comments come when our advisory came through. So very similar to the feedback you're getting from your community. And what, what we've listed in the advisory is just those activities where masking and distancing doesn't happen, and they're higher risk. If you look at when you go to a coffee shop, a restaurant, you, you take your mask off and you usually sit in closer proximity than you would. When you play a sport, whether it's basketball, hockey, et cetera, generally, you're closer in proximity. You are exerting that heavy breathing where the, the virus might spread further. And I think I will also, however, speak to what we know based on our team as I asked them explicitly about Manchester Ice Rink because I know that that's really critical and a crucial part to your community. And so far, our team has not experienced anything or any outbreaks or any infections related to them. So they're doing a really great job. I know that he's worked with Suzanne up there in McCall to look at plans and he's asked questions. And so they're doing an incredible job trying to manage this and balance what we know is really important to youth, some type of normalcy, if you can say that. So we're looking for, for businesses and entities listed in here to do these things where they're able to. If they can continue their policies and protocols, and they're safe and effective, and we're not having outbreaks, we certainly, we recognize and we want to honor that. Our team is aware, and there was some outbreaks related to hockey state tournament. Like, it can and, and may happen, and that's sort of the known risk factor. And what can the community do to make sure, or the individuals responsible for those businesses in the community do to just be as safe as possible, given the risk out there in the community? And I did share an alternative with Annette, who I think forward that on to you to, the wording is to modify youth and adult sports and activity to support physical distancing. So that's a little bit more generic. It doesn't say discontinue. It's saying, look at your plan. Are there any additional things that you can possibly do where physical distancing could occur? And sometimes the answer is yes, we could, you know, do smaller groups, or we could consider, you know, X, Y, and Z. And sometimes the answer is no, but really, is there an opportunity to further refine the safety procedures to keep the community as safe as possible? So hopefully, I'll stop there. I know there's some other comments you had about non-sports-related stuff, but I think that that was one of the bigger ones. So I'll certainly stop for questions and then ask, answer others as they come.
Gina, we did receive that timely today, and thank you for helping us with that. But I also want to thank you for just going over that and explaining it to us live tonight during our meeting. So with that, I'm going to ask counsel if they have any questions of Central District Health, either for Gina or Russ. And I'm not going to poll you, just going to ask counsel. I'll open it up for dialogue.
Bob, this is Mike. And the question I have is similarly to weigh the, the discussion of, for instance, the hockey rink or ice skating rink event center, is a similar question in this related to restaurants. And I think one of the public comments, you know, made the same point or the question that I've had numerous conversations with restaurant owners while considering this. And I wanted to get your, either Gina or Russ, your perspective on this. And that, so just if I quickly read the point that was made by this one public comment that seems to say it as well or better than I could. She says, "Singling out specific business types, i.e. saying restaurants should provide curbside only while gyms are able to remain open at 50%, doesn't make any sense to me. Perhaps this could be revised as an advisory to continue the diligent efforts our businesses have implemented, including offering curbside takeout where possible, offering online or virtual services where possible, limiting capacity in all businesses to maintain physical distance and distancing requirements, et cetera." "The way this is written now feels disrespectful to the immense amount of innovation, flexibility, and hard work our local businesses have put in to stay open and keep everyone healthy." So I guess what, you know, we have the Valley County mask order in place, which is important. We have the Central District Health Advisory in place, important. We have the Governor's Stage Two Modified State Health Order in place, also important. So how, you know, what do we, what do we suggest to our restaurants, for instance, in this example? Either Russ or Gina, what are your thoughts?
Gina, are you going to go? I can certainly try to answer that. This is Russ.
Yeah, go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, and I, I think it, you know, it's kind of the end of the day. There, there aren't any perfect, perfect solutions as far as complete reduction or prevention of COVID transmission. So, you know, I think the, the comment that you just read, I understand that. We're, we just looked, as I said earlier, at the very highest-risk environment. So gym at 50% capacity, generally, most gyms could have their, their members spaced out considerably, you know, between the machines and the equipment. Does it mean there's no risk? Absolutely not. There's still going to be risk of transmitting a respiratory virus when you're working out. Restaurants, on the other hand, you, you can't wear a face covering and eat and drink. You're, you're there in generally closer contact than, than six feet. So, you know, I, I'm, I'm open to whatever, whatever suggestions people have. This is, this is definitely a recommendation. It's a strong recommendation. It's based on where we believe the virus is likely to be transmitted. And I, I think, I guess that's where I'll, I'll stop. And Gina, you can weigh in on it as well.
Yeah, thanks, Russ. I agree with your answer. I, "only" is a very strong word in that particular section, you know. Provide takeout, carryout only, and really modifying it to say, when possible, still gets the message across that, hey, if you have a, a local business and, and you want to do the maximum you could possibly do to reduce transmission, you know, that is going to be your best option. There's also instances where they, you know, to physically distance, and I've been in many of your restaurants up there, there's not a lot of space. So it honestly might make more sense for them to not try to stay open and staff their businesses and instead go to, to takeout only and really market and promote that. So I, our intent is to never target businesses or entities that are really doing the right thing. But we look specifically at circumstances where masking and physically, physical distancing can't take place. And these are the, the topics that come to the top of the list where our investigative team sees transmission potentially, or happening and potentially happening as a high-risk activity. If that's the only thing someone did, other than work from home, was go out to dinner, then, then there's a chance that that was picked up at a restaurant. So again, it's, it's advisory in nature. It's a strong recommendation. And it, I would hope that it's not taken upon a business to look poorly on who doesn't choose to do carryout only if the advisory is in effect, knowing that it's not in order, that it is just a recommendation from the health department.
Gina, if I, if I could interject, so the way our resolution is written, number 21-04, Mike brings up a really good point. And we, as, before we vote on this, we need to know, it, it gets kind of confusing to us. So if we approve this resolution and we're talking about restaurants, does that mean they can only do takeout and curbside delivery? Can someone answer that for us?
Yeah, this is Gina. So, so this is already worded in our advisory right now that applies to all four counties. So the answer is no, they don't have to only be doing that. It's just a commitment saying from the council that they understand that these are the high-risk activities and these are recommendations. But the, this language is, is almost not directly word-for-word because we cleaned it up a little bit from what's in our current advisory here, which applies to all four counties. So you have businesses currently not operating with only curbside or, or delivery services, and they're not, they're not out of compliance, so to speak, right? They're just continuing to operate in a way that is the safest possible for that business.
Thank you for explaining that. Did you have any other questions, Mike?
No, I didn't. And, you know, part of where I was going with that is that I certainly understand that, that this is an advisory. It's just for those that really have invested in their businesses to make adaptations and really do the right thing, without question with their, you know, their heart, soul, spirit in their businesses and in our community. If those businesses, you know, who have been very challenged financially this year, I'm not putting finances above health, but just by the city putting this in place with that language in item 7D, I guess there's a sense to me that we put those businesses that really have been diligent, cooperating, adapting, we put them into the awkward position of then not following the advisory if they continue to remain open and they have, you know, six to 10 feet minimum between tables and these sorts of things. So that's just why I wanted to get some clarification. And hopefully, people are listening in on the meeting so that they're a part of this discussion and understand the reality of what we have here and what we're talking about and what the intent is. So those, that was, that was the extent of it. I really don't need to take more time on that. But thank you very much, Russ and Gina. Really, all through this, you cannot thank you enough for taking the time and spending the time to speak with us and to speak with our community, to keep us informed and to continue to do your darndest, to do the best thing and to work towards the health and safety of our greater community. So thank you, and of course, Greg Irvin and the rest of the healthcare community. Can't thank you enough.
Thanks, Mike. Any other questions from other council members?
So Bob, this is Melanie. I, I do have one other question, and I'd like to just say that, you know, I completely mirror everything that, that Mike has just asked and, and said. But one thing, one thing that strikes me as I've been talking to a lot of restaurateurs and business owners this last week is the questioning of why there's little to no mention of grocery stores or big-box stores in these counties. And, and I think in our county, it only really resonates with Rite Aid, Ridley's, and Albertsons. But granted, they're essential businesses. But, but there's little to no recommendation that specifically targets these types of businesses. So I guess the question is, is, is there a reason? Is it just because they're essential? Is it, is there a reason behind that?
This is, this is Russ. I'd be glad to respond.
They can't hear us, can they?
Go ahead, Russ. We can, we can hear you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah, you said it exactly correctly. They're, they are essential. And there's a different risk environment if you go into a grocery store.
We just lost your audio, Russ.
Somebody accidentally muted him, I think. So, sorry about that.
Can you hear me now? I don't know what happened.
Yep, you're back, you're back with us. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, so, yeah, the difference is, number one, you know, essential, people actually absolutely have to, you know, go to grocery stores and drugstores and things like that. And then the second thing is, just thinking about it from the risk perspective. I mean, that's a really, really good question. What about a grocery store? Well, typically, you're not going to be within six feet of anyone for really any length of time, other than maybe when you check out. You can wear a face covering the entire time. Everyone that you interact with would have a face covering on. And then when you, when you go to check out for your groceries, I know, I don't know the specific grocery stores in Valley County or McCall specifically, but they can put up the, you know, the plexiglass barriers between the person checking out and, and the, and the employee. So the risk is fairly minimal. I mean, you compare that to sitting around a table with, with five people from your workplace, take your face covering off and sit there, you know, for a half hour and converse and eat. So I, I mean, So, I mean, that's the best way I can describe it. It's never our intent, for sure, to disrupt anybody's business, do financial harm. It's just a really unfortunate reality we're in. But it's strictly the risk perspective as well as, you know, obviously groceries are essential.
So I appreciate that, by the way. I do want to mention, just as a sidebar, that I've seen some pretty bad behavior in the stores recently. And I'm a little taken aback by some of it. So I'm just wondering if there's any way that we could maybe strengthen our resolve to some of these larger corporations that own these stores in our community to be a little more vigilant.
Anything that you can, this is Irvin, anything we can do to encourage that that bad, because I'm seeing the same thing. People are relaxing. And, you know, I just can't imagine going into Ridley's or Albertson's or Rite Aid or the post office without a mask on. But we still see that pretty much every time we go there. And, you know, anything we can do or you can do as a government entity to strengthen these corporations that own these outfits, to strengthen their resolve to have people behave in an appropriate manner, you know, would be greatly appreciated because we are seeing some bad behavior. But I will reinforce what Russ said is that one thing we know about COVID is that length of exposure has a great deal to do with transmission of disease, that brief exposures, distanced and masked, are very unlikely to transmit the virus. But prolonged exposures, even masked and distanced, are associated with disease transmission. And the longer you go, the more likely that's going to be the case. So that's the problem. And, you know, and we're not picking on individual industries. We all love our restaurants. We all need to support our restaurants and our establishments in the community with takeout and anything we can do to keep them financially viable. But unfortunately, the virus is making the rules. And the virus says, if you sit, you know, across the table from somebody for an extended period of time, more than half an hour, sometimes more than that, you're speaking loudly, you're having fun, you're laughing and so on, and there's incredible potential viral spread in those circumstances. It's not that we're picking on that. It's just that's a bad situation. That's a situation where viral spread occurs, and we know that. And bars and restaurants unfortunately have been a place where there have been a lot of spreading events. And, you know, Russ and Gina certainly know about that. And anything we can do to support those businesses while encouraging the best behavior possible is going to help. And so there's a big difference between, you know, going to Albertson's and shopping with a mask on and staying away from folks and moving through quickly as opposed to sitting in a restaurant for an extended period of time. It's just a very different event.
Any other questions from council? All right, hearing none. Annette, could you help me on this? I think, I'm going to poll council briefly, one by one, but I think there is interest in making a motion, seconding it on this resolution with one amendment that would address the indoor children's activities, for example, or extracurricular activities, including adults, such as the Manchester ice rink. And Gina said earlier, explained that she provided some language to us. Could you read that again to us, Annette? Just get it fresh in our mind. And then I'm going to poll council to see if they have an interest in that amendment.
Sure. Let me find my email just one quick second. Okay, and I, I'm not muted, right? Okay. Sorry, I wasn't looking at my screen here. The sentence that I emailed to you that could replace that item 7C says, "Modify youth and adult sports/activities to support physical distancing." And I did pull up the resolution and the Word document and saved a copy of it as revised, thinking that if you did want me to go ahead and modify some of this language tonight, I could show you on my screen what the new language looks like. And then if that was something you were comfortable with, the council could make a motion to amend it and then make a motion to adopt it as amended. And you'd be able to see what the new language is up on the screen if you'd like me to do that. The other thing I heard was potentially maybe in the first line of number seven that says, "Implement COVID-safe procedures for outings/activities/places of business," including, and then it does the list, that within that, we could put, "When possible or wherever possible," something along those lines that Gina mentioned.
Great. Let me poll council and see if they're interested in those two suggestions. And if they are, then we'll definitely need your help tonight, Annette, to put that on the screen before we vote on an amendment and then vote on the resolution. All right, I'm going to poll council. Let me start with Melanie.
I'm ready to move forward on this, especially with the amendment with 7C. I'm just curious and interested in the actual verbiage that will be required to speak.
Thank you. Mike, your thoughts?
Yeah, I agree with the amendment on 7C. And I also would suggest that on 7D, to remove the word "only." For the reasons discussed.
Okay. Kami?
Yeah, I agree with the amendment on 7C. And I also would like to see on 7D to remove "only" and maybe enter in where possible.
Hey, Colby?
I'm sure it all sounds good. I'm trying to think way back to the 17th. We asked for this to be prepared in anticipation of the Central District Health Order being approved, correct? Was that?
It was after we found out that they did not approve their order. I think their, when their vote failed or was a tie and it didn't pass, that was the week before. I think that was like on December 8th or something.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I was just, it's happened in the last month.
Yes, it has. Congratulations.
Thanks. Hey, let's see, I guess, you know, I'm still, this doesn't really give us the ability to enforce anything. We already have a countywide enforceable ordinance for wearing masks. This Central District Health Advisory is already in place. I mean, I guess, what's the virtue of doing this versus just writing a public letter of support that we support Central District Health in this current advisory? I guess that would be for you, Annette.
Well, I think the act of adopting the resolution sends a strong message. You know, it's an affirmative action in your record and in the minutes and is just a stronger statement than doing a letter of support. I don't know if Bill Nichols wants, can say whether or not there's any particular weight that comes with doing a formal resolution and advisory order as compared to just a statement letter that's on our website or something. But I think it just reinforces the messaging very specifically. And you would be voting, I would assume, to approve the mayor to sign a letter anyway. That would probably have very similar, you know, we support these items from the health advisory, would be my guess.
The other thought I had on that, Colby, is that we heard from Dr. Irvin that this is important. And we heard from Russ and Gina that this resolution that we're probably going to amend, that it's really important to them. So it seems like there's some real value there.
Sure, and I agree with all of this that's in here. And I agree with the recommended changes. I guess I just am a little bit of a loss for why we're even discussing the changes if they're merely advisory in nature, you know. It doesn't really matter what they'll say. You know, we can continue our messaging that we've been doing. I guess I'm asking questions beyond what, you know, my personal beliefs are on this.
Mayor and council, can you hear me today?
Yes, Bill.
Okay, so I think maybe the message is by adopting a resolution, you're saying, and particularly by inserting these amendments, this is an action by the council that says this is what we think is important. The letter that would support the existing Central District Health Advisory Order would be a positive step toward those goals in that order. But this way, it shows that you actually took some time to think through how this advice might fit your community. And so the adjustments that you make show that you actually considered those issues. But in the end, it is correct. It's not something that anybody's going to get fined or get charged with a misdemeanor or anything else because it's just advice. So to that extent, Councilor Nielsen is correct. It doesn't really, it's not really anything other than, we feel very strongly about this and we would like our community to follow through with these recommendations. That's all it is.
Thanks for that answer.
Does that help, Colby? Set the context then?
Yeah, no, that's very helpful. You know, I think it's important for folks who, you know, for clarity for everyone, you know, the reasoning behind the agenda. So that's all I have. So thank you all who have been on the call and all your continued efforts to keeping our community safe and healthy.
Would you like me to pull that document up on my screen so you can see the edits?
Yes, I think we're ready to move into making a motion. And if you could help us with those edits, that would be great, Annette, so that we know, you know, the details of the motion on those amendments.
So here is where there's the new language for C. And because of the way the automatic bullet numbering happens, when I deleted this one, it made it D, but it was really originally C. And then here is where I believe Kami suggested the addition of this language where possible. And then Mike suggested deleting the word "only."
So it's really small print on our screen here at American Legion Hall. Could you read the full sentence on each of those items?
Sure, let me see if I can make this bigger. Does that make it bigger on your screen?
Yep, so if you could go back and show us those changes, then just point it out.
So the original C was this one that struck through, "discontinue." The new C is the language from Gina, "modify youth and adult sports/activities to support physical distancing." And then in the number D, Mike suggested striking out only. And Kami suggested adding "where possible" right here.
Actually, instead of "only," to provide takeout/carryout where possible and close no later than 10:00 PM.
Oh, okay, thank you. I was thinking you meant at the end of the sentence.
Thank you, Kami, for that edit. Provide takeout, carryout where possible and close no later than 10:00, okay? And was there anything else?
No, that's all I heard unless there's some new suggestions.
Counsel, did that capture the amendments we just discussed the last 10 minutes?
Yes, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes, Kami.
Thanks, Kami. All right.
Actually, I'm going to say we might want to add "non-school" just because of our limitation on having anything to do with school activities, if you don't mind me adding that.
No, you discussed that with this in the narrative, so that's consistent. So with that understanding, is council ready to make a motion, second it, and take a roll call vote on this?
Yes, Bob, is it first a motion to amend and then a motion for what's amended? Or what's our process?
That's correct. The first motion will be to amend Resolution 21-04 as shown on the screen here. This is Mike. Motion to amend Resolution 21-04 as shown on the screen. Thank you, Mike. Is there a second?
Second, this is Melanie.
Thank you, Melanie. Motion has been made and seconded to amend Resolution 21-04 as shown on our screen and is captured by City Manager Annette Spickard. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Machesik?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Callan?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, council. Now we're on to approving or adopting Resolution 21-04 as amended. May I have a motion, please?
Bob, this is Melanie. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 21-04 for to implement an advisory order to efficiently minimize and mitigate the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic in accord with Idaho Central District Health District's Public Health Advisory dated November 17, 2020, as amended and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Mike, second?
Thank you, Melanie. Thank you, Mike. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Resolution 21-04 as amended tonight to implement an advisory order to efficiently minimize and mitigate the and mitigate the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic in accordance, in accord with Idaho Central District Health District's Public Health Advisory dated November 17th, 2020, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesik?
Yes.
Councilmember Callen?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thanks, Annette, and I wanted to thank Bill Nichols for providing our, that legal perspective and answering some tough questions on, on why we're doing this. Um, I hope that Gina and Russ are still on. I want to thank you for helping us tonight. Um, please know that we are very supportive of everything you're doing, and thank you for helping us with this tough issue tonight. Dr. Irvin and Amber, thank you. Please express our thanks to everyone at St. Luke's.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your partnership.
Yeah, thanks for inviting us. All right, so with that, we'll move on to our next agenda bill. Agenda Bill 21-007, Presentation Regarding the New Draft Legislation on Our Lake Water Quality As Proposed, Proposed by Roy A. Guerin of A. Guerin Public Policy.
Hello, Mayor, this is Roy A. Guerin.
Hi, Roy. Welcome.
How are you, sir? Thank you. Uh, Mayor and members of the council, uh, let me first introduce myself to you, and then I'd like to take a few moments of your time to, uh, go through the draft legislation that's, uh, hopefully before you. Uh, we did provide a copy to the city clerk prior to your meeting today. Uh, and just as a procedural matter, uh, we had intended that this would be an informational, uh, session for the city council, uh, and should you decide that you would like to be supported this legislation, uh, you can defer that to a later meeting in that our intent is not to submit this legislation to the Idaho Legislature until early February, uh, in their upcoming annual session. So by, by way of background, I'm attorney in private practice in Boise, as the mayor indicated. Uh, I have quite a bit of experience, uh, in government. Uh, I served as a deputy prosecuting attorney for Ada County early in my career. Uh, I was later a deputy attorney general. Among other items, uh, I handled environmental issues for the office, and then I was also a senior official in the United States Department of Energy a, a number of years ago. I live in Boise, but I do also have a home on Big Payette Lake, just outside the city limits of McCall, and so my wife and my family and I spend a great deal of time, uh, in your great city. The reason that this legislation is before you today, uh, is a result of work that I did, uh, well over 20 years ago, and some of you may recall the gentleman by the name of Peter Johnson. Uh, Peter, uh, was a resident of Valley County for a great deal of time. He was a very successful business executive, uh, and he was, uh, my boss when we worked together in the Reagan administration. Uh, he was the administrator and chief executive officer of the Bonneville Power Administration. Uh, when we left Bonneville and came back to Idaho, Peter retired to, uh, their home on the lake, and I believe actually their home, uh, was the first cabin to be located on the lake, uh, many, many decades ago. Uh, but Peter became very concerned about water quality in Big Payette Lake, and so he asked if I would assist him in drafting legislation that addressed water quality in Big Payette. And so we did draft legislation back in 1991 and 1992, uh, that became law in 1993 by unanimous action of the legislature and the governor. Uh, and that legislation still actually exists today. It's the Big Payette Lake Water Quality Act. Uh, the one thing that is different from what was in the original act is that by operation of the act itself, the 11-member Big Payette Lake Water Quality Council, which is a creature of statute, uh, has gone away. It no longer exists. It's sunsetted by operation of the act itself, and today there is a Big Payette Lake Water Quality Council, but it's, it's not the same council. The current council today is a nonprofit corporation that, uh, as I think all of you know, is, uh, an advocate for water quality in the lake itself. To bring you current, uh, this last summer, a number of individuals, uh, that are concerned about lake water quality, uh, asked if I would take a look at the existing statute, the Big Payette Lake Water Quality Act, and consider drafting amendments to it, uh, that would bring back the council. And so I began that process in consultation, both with the Big Payette Lake Water Quality Council folks, but also because of concerns, uh, on Lake Cascade, uh, I worked with the group called Friends of, uh, Lake Cascade in, uh, working through the amendments that ultimately are now before you this afternoon or this evening. In drafting this, I worked very, very closely, uh, with the Valley County Commission. I've had the opportunity to address them on two separate occasions relative to this legislation, uh, received input from them, uh, and have incorporated that input in the draft that's before you. Uh, and Mayor and council members, I would stress, this is, is a draft, uh, and it's still, uh, if you will, a work in progress as we seek to, uh, get input from folks like yourself and other interested parties. Today, in addition to the two groups I'd mentioned that I work very closely with, uh, I have met with the director and senior staff of the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, which I think all of you know has primary, primary responsibility for water quality in the waters of the state. Uh, I've met with them. They're conceptually supportive of it, but they know I'm in the process of gaining additional input, and it would be my intent to, uh, bring a, a draft to them, uh, later this month for final review. I've also had conversations with, uh, a number of legislators who are aware that our intent is to bring this legislation forward to them at the upcoming session, uh, and also I'm in contact with the members of the governor's staff. Uh, just a couple of things I'd like to say, uh, in terms of, uh, why I think this is important, uh, and the reasons why, uh, it's before you, and then I would be glad to respond to questions that you might have, uh, based upon hopefully the document that has been provided to you in your packet. It's, it's no secret, obviously, to anyone that the lake is under tremendous pressure, uh, given population growth and, and, and based upon the increasing use of the lake. That is a, an issue relative to water quality, kind of at its bottom line, and I think we're all of the opinion that unless the water quality in that lake is, is, is very high and remains high, that it's going to be a, a real significant negative if the water quality goes down, both in terms of the economy as well as just the, the general nature of the community. Under law currently, uh, there is not a single entity that is charged with overall responsibility for water quality of the lake. Uh, it's currently spread out over a number of federal and state agencies, uh, most notably, as I'd mentioned, the Department of Environmental Quality. Uh, at least in, in my view as, as a lawyer, based upon my work over the number of years in practice, uh, I don't believe that local governments have any direct authority relative to the regulation of water quality. I think there's some indirect authority that may exist under Land use Planning Act, but as a general proposition, uh, water quality is not something within the, the jurisdiction of, of local governments. This legislation, if it's adopted, would be an immediate response to addressing the issue of stress on the lakes, on the lakes. Uh, it provides a mechanism for studying and reviewing both new and past water quality data on the lake. Uh, in essence, what it does, it brings a great big bright focus, if you will, on the water quality problems that are currently, uh, presenting themselves, uh, in the lake itself. I believe that a, a statute that creates an entity, uh, with membership appointed by the governor elevates the, the governmental process to a much higher level to address these sorts of concerns. Uh, it would empower local government and citizens with the ability to focus on water quality in the lake, and also, I think most importantly, trigger a process for state and federal agencies to a fully, to fully address, uh, water quality problems in the lake and also in the watershed. And I should point out, ladies and gentlemen, that the act also covers, uh, Lake Cascade, as I mentioned. It would create an identical council for that, uh, body of water, and then the two councils, both the Big Payette as well as the Lake Cascade Water Quality Council, together would form the Watershed Advisory Group for the North Fork of the Payette River. And a Watershed Advisory Group is something that's called out in the Idaho Water Quality Act. The, just, just in terms of closing my initial comments here, uh, I believe that this is a, a very important and significant step forward, uh, in dealing with these issues. I can point out to you that the Big Payette Lake Water Quality Act has been successful, uh, based upon the work that the now abandoned council had, had done. There is a lake management plan that they put into place that still is, uh, in, in legal effect, uh, but it needs to be updated. It's twenty-seven years old, uh, and it requires some additional attention and some focus. Uh, I think also you probably are aware of that there is an effort, or actually an ongoing study, uh, by the University of Idaho, uh, that is a in-depth, comprehensive two-year study of water quality in Big Payette Lake. Uh, that study has been commissioned, uh, by the university with support from local citizens who have been funding the study. Also, there has been a very substantial contribution to the cost of that study by the Valley County Commission. Uh, the first year of work has been done, the first season's work has been done in terms of collecting, uh, water samples and doing other data collection. There'll be a second season that'll be upcoming this summer, and then sometime late this year, there'll be a final study that will come out that will address with great particularity of the problems that the lake, uh, does have relative to water quality. So that, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council, that's a introduction to the legislation. I did prepare a, a summary of the legislation that, again, hopefully is in your packets. It's pretty straightforward legislation. Uh, it, it, in, in very simple terms, provides for a statement of legislative intent as to the reasons why it is as important, as why the legislature is establishing it. Uh, it provides for powers and duties of the water quality councils. I would point out that the councils do not have any regulatory authority, but rather, uh, their authority is to gather data, to interpret the data, to identify what the problems are with water quality, to bring that to the attention of federal and state agencies, and then, uh, if and when the council makes a recommendation, uh, to address water quality, uh, federal and state agencies are to implement, uh, those recommendations to the, quote, "greatest extent practicable," close quote, uh, which I think plays, places a, a, a significant presumption of action by, uh, an agency, a regulatory agency, to take action. Uh, if in fact the agency chooses not to take action, then it needs to provide a written, a written list of the reasons why it's not going to go, go ahead and, and take that action. The membership of the council is called out. Uh, it was, uh, an 11-member council, uh, one member from the existing Valley County Commission at the time of their appointment. There would be one member who is an elected member of the McCall City Government at the time of their appointment, and nine individuals from the public. And in making his appointment, appointments, the governor would be looking to various sectors of the economy that would be affected by, uh, water quality, such as agriculture, point source discharges, forest products, livestock, uh, motorized, non-motorized water-based recreation and the like. Uh, and there's a provision then for terms of office. Uh, there's a provision for organization. It also goes on to provide for a technical advisory group, which is a whole list of local, state, and federal agencies that would serve as a technical advisory group to the council, and that's something that worked out exceptionally well, uh, during the time that the original council was in place. There's a provision for active public participation, public information about the council activities. Uh, there's a provision for accounts to be established in the, uh, state treasury, uh, to underwrite the costs of the council. Uh, this does not seek to have an appropriation, uh, from the legislature, but rather would look to other sources of revenue to underfund or to underwrite, I should say, the council's activities. Uh, the last time that the council was in existence, uh, Peter Johnson and I were successful in raising a little over $70,000 of monies to, uh, to underwrite the council activities. And then finally, in closing, uh, I'm, I'm well aware of, of the work that you and the, the county, other cities are engaged in, in the development of a waterway management plan. Uh, this is meant to be complimentary to that. It's not meant to be duplicative in any way. Uh, this council would focus exclusively on water quality and water quality only, uh, issues relative to the management of the water, and in particular, the management of water craft on the lakes and the use of the lakes by the public would not be, uh, under the jurisdiction of this council, but rather would be under the jurisdiction of whatever entity that would come out of your current RFP process. So with that, Mayor, uh, that's somewhat long-winded, uh, overview of, of what's at, uh, at stake here in front of you, but I would be more than glad at this point to respond to questions that you and the council would have.
Thank you, Mr. Guerin. So, Roy, just, just to be, just to make, make sure you know what's in our packet, we did receive the executive summary. It was really well-written, and you covered most of the points in that. And then we have the exact language of the proposed legislation, so it was a, it was a good packet put together timely for us. Thank you for explaining some of that background and history. It is pretty complicated, um, the history that is, and it, context is always helpful to us. And as far as, as far as tonight's, um, action, our, the recommended action is to, to provide direction to our city staff on whether or not we want to schedule a letter stating a formal position on the proposal to be placed on a future meeting agenda. So this is very timely, and thank you for joining us tonight. Are there questions for Mr. Guerin from council? All right, um, Annette, did I capture the recommended action? You would like to hear from council whether or not we want, want to schedule, uh, a letter stating a formal position supporting this proposal? Is that correct?
Yes, um, as I believe Mr. A. Guerin mentioned at the beginning of his comments, they plan to, um, have this introduced in early February, I believe he said, and so if the council is interested in taking a formal position on the bill, um, for the purposes of the legislators that will be reviewing it, um, and just let me know, and I'd be happy to draft something up to bring back to at a later council meeting for you to review and approve, and then we can get it submitted.
Great. All right, council, what's your, what is your preference? Let me start with Melanie.
So I, um, I agree with the intent and purpose of, of what we're seeing in this draft, um, but again, it But, again, it has been mentioned that it's a draft, so I feel like we should see the final. And I guess my, my initial response would be that we should prepare a letter in support once seeing the final draft.
Bill Nichols, can you help us with that on legislative matters? When does the draft become a final? How does that work?
Mr. Mayor, council members, excuse me, Mr. Garen can describe it much more eloquently than I can, but once he's got a piece of legislation that he thinks is in draft form that, that a legislator will introduce, it goes into a form called a routing slip, and then it has to be approved by a committee for introduction. So, that could be down the road. Part of the issue, though, or part of the problem, if you want to call it that, is a lot of times these things happen very quickly. There'll be a, like a natural resources committee meeting, and the day before it shows up on the agenda, and you don't necessarily see the draft, and Mr. Garen can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think you see the actual bill until a committee has actually accepted the routing slip and asked that a bill be printed.
Okay, so keep us on, on time. I think we get the picture. Melanie, we may not see a final until much later, like after it's actually in the legislative process. So, a question I'll, question I'll be asking is, do you have enough trust in what the draft language is and realizing that there's going to be changes, some minor changes?
So, like I said, I do agree with the intent and purpose of this, and so I would be comfortable moving forward with that letter.
With the letter. Great. Okay. Mike, are you comfortable?
Yeah, I mean, more or less, our community in the, you know, in our comprehensive plan addressed the need for, and the desire for a near-term priority of a lake management plan, which a year ago or so, as council and working with the Valley County Commissioners, we made a decision to move forward in that direction, of which we continue to do so. We've allocated resources financially, time, investment in doing what our comp plan asked for, which is development of a lake management plan. So, I have read the Big Payette Lake Water Quality Act of ninety-six or ninety-seven, I forget the date, but in detail, I'm very familiar with it. I am very familiar with the history. I am also, like all of us, very much a strong advocate for the value of our lake, our watershed, and our water quality. The only thing of interest to me is, or question is, I don't believe that our community would in any way want to be handing over any sense of control to another entity out of the State House, the law through the State House, that would in any way have stronger effect than our own lake management plan for our community. And so I think this is valuable. I think it's good. I'm not understanding exactly why the timing at this point in time and where that's coming from. Mr. Garen could certainly address that. But I think the priority for us is what we've decided within our community is to work on a lake management plan, which we are doing, and that goes through the proper planning process of start, which I don't need to go through how a planning process works, but a study is not the first step in a planning process. So I think that, you know, we need to stay focused on what we're doing and why we're doing it and maintaining a local engagement on this. So whether or not we support or not the intent of bringing back the Big Payette Lake Water Quality Act, certainly we all support water quality. So, in that sense, am I in support of, of that? Yes. But I don't want anything to be taking away from our local control and our local efforts to address the needs of our community through a proper planning document.
Roy, could you really briefly address Councilmember Machesik's concern?
Surely. Councilman, I appreciate your sense of history on this and the work that you've done on it. That's greatly appreciated. This would be a lake, excuse me, a Big Payette Lake Water Quality Plan. It's not designed to be a management plan in the context or in the sense that you would have a locally adopted plan for the management of the lakes. This would be, as I see it, my intent is to make this a separate matter as relates exclusively to water quality. And so that's, that's how it is that we've come to bring this to you at this point. I've spent a fairly significant amount of time with Commissioner Biggeman in terms of talking about the dividing line between what you all are doing with the RFP process and the management process, a lake management process, versus what would be contained in this. And I think that we have made that differentiation, and we've actually put in a special section of the legislation at the very, very end that talks about a county waterway management plan, and it makes a distinction between that plan and what this water quality plan would do.
Thank you. Kami, what's, what's your preference? Would you support a letter?
I, you know, I, again, I would like to see a final draft, but I understand how the legislation works and things do work kind of quickly. I would be in favor of doing a support letter for the water quality.
Thank you. Colby?
Yeah, I'm in support of a letter of support for this. I think that, you know, in conjunction with local efforts, I think that this will bring in additional resources and with the, with the focus on water quality that will, will help guide us in our decision-making in the future. You know, as we look to the recent past about, you know, people got pretty fired up about the previous discussions about lake management. I think this, this is something that's important that provides, you know, facts, science, data to back up decision-making processes. So I am definitely in favor of this.
Thank you, Colby. This is Mayor Bob.
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm in favor of that as well. So, Annette, does that give you the direction?
Yeah. Yes, sir. I will work with these folks to come up with a letter to bring back to at a future meeting that you can review and approve for the mayor's signature, and then we'll make sure it goes to the proper people that will be assigned, whichever committee is reviewing it, at the legislature.
Thank you. Mr. Garen, thank you very much. I really appreciate you joining us tonight, explaining the context, the history, what's, what it's intended to do, what it's not intended to do, and what the limitations are. We look forward to working with you in the future, and as council mentioned, it'll, it'll be very helpful to us to understand more about our water quality. So, thank you. With that, we're going to adjourn for five minutes, and then we will resume our meeting with the next agenda bill, which is adopting personnel policy manual. This is Mayor Bob. Welcome back, everyone. I just had to drink a little bit more water. I was sitting in the chair too long and starting to cramp up. So, we will move on to our next agenda item, and that is Personnel Policy Manual. Tracy, would you help us with that?
I would love to. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. The resolution that is presented to you tonight is regarding an update to our Personnel Policy Manual for all City of McCall employees. I did provide a memo in your packet which details the most substantial changes to the verbiage in the Personnel Policy Manual. Just to kind of give you an overview, the purpose of a policy, Personnel Policy Manual specifically, really is for it to be a guiding document to ensure that we're consistently applying rules, regulations, expectations, et cetera, to all employees across the city. There are really no substantial changes in the revised version that has been presented to you this evening regarding our expectations of expected conduct as well as prohibited The format of the policy manual has changed quite a bit from the current version, and that is based on a recommendation from ICrim. I actually like the new format quite a bit. I think it's a lot easier to navigate, just based on the table of contents, et cetera. I think it'll be a lot easier for employees to use. I know I stated in the memo that Personnel Policy Manuals need to be reviewed at least annually and then updated as needed, but not longer than every five years really is a good idea, just to ensure legal compliance with changing federal laws as well as state One of the, the changes that is quite substantial, actually, is the addition of parental leave. Governor Little, earlier this year, I believe it was in January, recommended that the State of Idaho adopt paid parental leave for all state executive branch employees. And in that executive, which all commissions of the state to consider adopting and implementing similar policies for their aging. The parental leave would provide eight weeks of paid leave to any employee who is bringing a new child home, whether it be by birth or by adoption or legal guardianship taking place. So anytime you're bringing a new child into your home, the state executive order applies or as bonding time, essentially, so time to bond with that child and really get, you know, your household in order and get your family situation sorted out and make sure that everybody's, is comfortable with that. The paid parental leave would apply to male or female employees who have a new child in their home. My, my thoughts on this are that it's a great tool, it's a good benefit to offer because it provides flexibility and support to our employees. I also believe that there is value in this, adding this benefit as a recruiting tool, essentially. I think this type of benefit is becoming almost expected as the workforce becomes younger, essentially, in, in our country. As people retire and we're, we're recruiting younger employees, this type of benefit has been widely implemented across our country. And Idaho is not one of the last states, but is definitely on the tail end of implementing paid parental leave benefits. And I think there are really little-to-no, almost, financial impacts to the city based on the way that we budget. We account for all time of an employee in every position being at work full-time. So we have the funds to cover paying that employee... paying that employee's salary essentially for the entire year. And personally, I think that the benefit to our current staff as well as potential staff is tremendous. So again, in the memo, I kind of detailed the changes or the new sections, and most of these were referred to or I guess referenced in the, the current policy manual and previous versions. But based on ICrimp's recommendation, there were a few sections that were called out specifically to provide additional guidance and resources for employees. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have based on the version that was provided to you this evening.
Thank you. Counsel, any quick questions for Tracy? Hearing none. Counsel, are you good with the revisions and the updated Personnel Policy Manual?
Mike, I'm good.
This is Kami. I'm good.
I'm good. This is Melanie.
Yeah, it sounds good to me. Ask Colby. Need to come work first, I guess, next time I have a kid.
I was actually thinking of you when I revised that.
Yeah, I think that, that would be, that would be really nice for, for city staff to have that opportunity.
I agree.
Tracy, thank you very much. Good job on that. And it's, um, thanks for the briefing. It's nice to hear that we're consistent with some of, some of our groups like ICrimp and, and others who specialize in reducing our risk. So I think you really added some value. I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve Resolution 21-003. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 21-03, adopting the City of McCall's Personnel Policy Manual and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Thank you, Kami. Is there a second?
Second, Colby.
Thank you, Colby. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Resolution 21-03, adopting the City of McCall Personnel Policy Manual and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Callen?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Machazek?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Sorry, I almost missed you.
Thank you, counsel. Motion carries. We now have a new Personnel Policy Manual. Good work on that, Tracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel.
Next item is request of an adoption of an ordinance amending McCall City Code Sections 183, 184 to clarify who may call a special meeting and clarify the start time for all regular council meetings.
Uh, yes, mayor and counsel, this is Bessie Jo, and this is just finalizing the recommended code amendment that you saw at your last meeting. So, um, the ordinance is there for you. So the change was very simple, just to add in a council member or by the city manager and confirmed by one half of the members of council for calling a special. And then the time of the meeting being clarified, removing for a work session so that the council meeting just starts at 5:30. So, any questions?
Thanks, Bessie Jo. Counsel, are we good to proceed with, there are two recommended actions. Suspend the rules, read by title only, one time only, ordinance number?
997.
997. And then the second item is to adopt ordinance number 997.
Bob, this is Melanie. I make a motion to suspend the rules and read by title only, one time only, ordinance number 997.
Thank you, Melanie.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Kami. Motion has been made and seconded to suspend the rules and read by title only, one time only, ordinance number 997. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Callen?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Machazek?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Counsel passes that, that motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Bessie Jo, would you suspend the rules and read by title only, one time only, ordinance number 997?
Ordinance 997. An ordinance of the City of McCall Valley County, Idaho, amending Sections 1.8.3 Special Meetings, calling of same and 1.8.4 Time of Meeting of Title 1 Administrative Chapter 8 City Council Mayor of the McCall City Code to allow a special meeting to be called by any member of the council or by the city manager if confirmed by one half plus one of the council. And to clarify that all council meetings start at 5:30 PM unless otherwise noticed.
Thank you, Bessie Jo. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 997?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 997, amending McCall City Code Sections 1.8.3 and 1.8.4 to clarify who may call a special meeting and clarify the start time for all regular council meetings, approve the publication of the summary, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
Thanks, Kami. Thanks, Melanie. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt ordinance number 997, amending McCall City Code Sections 1.8.3, 1.8.4 to clarify who may call a special meeting and clarify the start time for all regular council meetings, approve the publication of the summary and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. May I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Callen?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Machazek?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good work on that, Bessie Jo. Thank you, counsel. We're now on to Agenda Bill 21-003. Request to approve Resolution 21-01, adopting the McCall City Council Meeting Schedule for year 2021.
All right, mayor, counsel, this is Bessie Jo again. And this again is just to adopt the schedule that was discussed at your December 17th meeting. It shows that all regular meetings are the second and fourth Thursday as it is in city code. The modification is for October, November, and December for your regular meetings to be on the first and third to accommodate for the holidays. And then, um, the calendar that is provided just shows and underline on the first Thursday of every month that shows a possible special meeting and then your orange highlighted special meetings on Fridays. But the resolution just calls out your regular schedule.
I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-01.
Motion to approve Resolution 21-01, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
This is Melanie.
Thank you, Melanie. A motion has been made and seconded to approve Resolution 21-01, adopting the McCall City Council Meeting Schedule for 2021 and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Machazek?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Callen?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carries. So we've got our calendar and our resolution approved for the meeting schedule. I think the next item is Agenda Bill 21-001, Counsel Liaison Duties. And Bessie Jo, you were going to help us with that?
Yes. Mayor, council, it's Bessie Jo again, here to present the council liaison duties. Um, in the attached memo, you can see who is currently assigned to the various boards and committees in our community. And primarily, I would assume that the two that we need to really look at are the two that left vacant when Mr. Sowers left the council. So those two positions are with the West Central Mountains Economic Development Council and Payette River Scenic Byway Advisory Council. So if there's anyone that would be interested in filling those two roles.
Um, yeah, this is Kami, and I wouldn't mind being part of the Payette River Scenic Byway.
Great. Do you know how often, does anyone on this call or anyone, city staff know how often that group meets? I was thinking that one might be like a quarterly, doesn't, maybe biannually. It's not like every month from what I remember, but we could find out.
This is Annette. I think it is affiliated somehow through the Economic Development Council as well, which I think was why Tom was on both. But you're right, I don't think they meet regularly. I think it's just as they have required things they need to do to maintain that designation for area.
I could also do the West Central Mountain Economic Council.
Is that Kami?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds like a good match.
This is Melanie. I, I just want to say that, you know, if Kami doesn't want to do the West Central Mountain Economic Development Council, since I'm no longer part of the chamber, I have some, some extra time that I, I would also be willing to do that.
That sounds like a good offer. Kami, what do you think?
I'm open either way. Um, you know, I, it doesn't matter to me.
Well, we, we could appoint one and then have the other as an alternate. So like if Kami can't attend, then she could contact Melanie and Melanie could attend.
That's fabulous.
Yeah, that would work.
Okay. Did you capture that, Bessie Jo? All right, we got that done. Guess that's it? Uh, counsel, you good with that? The proposal is that Kami would be on the scenic byways meetings and then also the primary contact for West Central Highlands, I call it, the Economic Development Council. And if she's unable to attend, she would ask Melanie to attend as a backup. Is that correct? Everyone good with that?
Yep. Good.
Thank you. I think we, I'm looking at my script, there's adjourned. Is that correct, Bessie?
Yep, that's what I, what I see.
Before I adjourn, I just wanted to compliment everyone on council tonight for reading your material, asking good questions, participating fully and helping make these decisions. It's, it's really, really good when all of us have a chance to review this material. And you, you probably noticed several times during the meeting, several guest speakers complimented you on how well-informed you are. I really appreciate that. It helps us a lot. So keep up the good work. Everyone have a good rest of their week. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. See y'all next week.